All right, well, it's like we've got a forum here, so we will meeting at at 6:30. Ryan, want to take us through the virtual meeting information, please?
Sir. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for more participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event we were unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Okay, thanks. We're at open session. I see we have a couple of attendees. We've got Chuck, Michael, and Bill. I don't know if they're here for open session as well. If they are, have they let you know that? Or do they want to let themselves let themselves be heard now?
So they're here for the capital plan presentation, but if they want to speak in open session, they can certainly signify.
Okay, and as we wait for that, like five seconds, anyone else that that you know is coming for this?
Not for open session, though.
Okay. All right, well, I guess let's let's get started. So we'll start off with with announcements. We've got a couple. Start first with the the community survey, which which been a full court press recently.
Yeah, so we are trying to get the maximum number of participants we can, and the board was right in saying that people do participate in these things. We have over 450 responses so far with one week to go. So I kind of had a side goal of 500 responses. I think we'll get there pretty easily. I think that's a pretty good cross section of the of the community. So although surveys are limited in their their efficacy, it's certainly another data point for the board and other boards to use for decisions that we have coming up, some big ones.
Great. So we've got 30 some odd hundred registered voters, right? Which is another way to think most people are registered to vote and they're adults. So you assume pretty good percentage will be, you know, 15% by the end of it or something.
Yeah, of adult voters will probably be in the in the 25% range.
Okay, that's great. And we've got the 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 light fight results now. That's for light fight. Katie, why don't you take us to take us through it?
I'm hoping you guys can hear me because you guys are all breaking up something fierce. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. You're freezing a little bit.
Okay, I know I'm got really shitty reception tonight, so this is gonna be fun. I'll do my best. So yeah, light fight was really good. Me, the front and the for online and on Facebook, it was shared well over, you know, hundreds of times and and one post was viewed well over, you know, 6,000 times. So I feel like we did concert entered this light fight. We did really well. When are the traditional and classic four to
Can't hear.
And then I hear me? I'm like freezing.
You're freezing up.
Yeah, I'm getting very
So I can take over for Katie. She sent out a nice, nice summary email. Some of the things she was saying, 655 people voted, the map was viewed over 27,000 times, 16,000 shares and views on not shares viewed on Facebook, hundreds of shares on just one single post, 250 paper maps were handed out. So just a huge event made the cover of the Boston telegramming exactly Christmas Day story and the winners of the light thing, which is what people really care about. One second. Traditional classic category, first place was 42 Hale Road, second was nine Morgan Road, and third was 16 New Templeton Road. And then in the big go bigger, stay home category, you had six Worcester Road, 38 Main Street, and one Worcester Road. And then the the new award this year, the brightest bulb business award went to Tiny Toes and Little Bo's Photography at 245 Gardner Road. And then one fun fact that she added was for those of you who asked at 42 Hill Road, how many movies were in their display? There was a total of nine, which included The Grinch, Charlie Brown's Christmas, Christmas Story, Frosty, Miracle on 34th Street, Elf, Polar Express, Rudolph, and National Influence Christmas Vacation.
Awesome. Well, I know the winner of the was it the go bigger, go home, right? So that was on all of them on Main Street, Gardner Road, correct, Katie? You know what? That's right. That's right. It's already been thrown for next year, too. So, you know, I can't imagine this. This goes anywhere but up. So great job. You brought a lot of people to the town. You is exactly what we try to do. This sort of stuff for and and then some. So, you know, on to the next.
Well done, Katie.
Yeah, next up is frozen. So make sure everybody gets their guesses.
All right, sounds good. Anyway, frozen assets is what she said was coming next. So if everyone didn't hear that. So so one one other sort of housekeeping thing. So we are getting some feedback regardless of Katie's. I think somebody may have Ryan, you haven't made any of the attendees panelists yet, right?
I have not. So Jeff, you're you've got some feedback going on. So I've been muting you. Just kind of signal when you want to speak and we'll unmute you that way. You can sound as pleasant as you always do.
All right, sounds good. All right, well, we we're up to item three here, which is presentations. We've got the the fiscal year 22 and 26 through 26 capital plan presentation. So I assume you're going to promote some others to panelists here. And and if in doing that, if they can hear me, basically, what you could do is is introduce yourselves and and sort of set the table for what you're about to present for those that are new to this. And then, you know, let us know if you have any questions and then we'll go from there.
I guess I'll start. Hi, guys. How you doing? Michael Stoudt, chairman of the Capital Planning Committee.
Hello. Welcome back.
Yes, a little weird to do it over Zoom, but good to see you guys.
You too.
And in the audience, we have Chuck Reed, who is on the CIPC from the Finance Committee, and Bill Murray, who everybody knows, member at large. They'll be they're here for support and can obviously speak to anything if we want to call them in. But just for simplicity, we're going to keep Michael in the room for now.
All right, well, Ryan has a presentation, but I just wanted to say that we you know, are happy to work with you guys and our our goal for this year as given to us by the selectmen is to come up with a capital plan recommendations for fiscal year 22 coming up, but also a five-year capital plan, and also to evaluate options for municipal buildings, which is obviously an intensive capital request that the town has. We're a five-member board. It's made up of three citizens at large, as myself, there's Bill Murray and Stephanie Alice. We also have Francois Steiger, who's a planning board representative, and Charles Reed, who's a finance committee representative. So that's our our group of five that we met multiple times throughout the fall and finalized our plan the week before Christmas to present to you guys. So there we have our our makeup there. Ryan, you're probably better to go over the if you want to go over the numbers with the select board, probably more qualified than I am at this point, if you want to do that at this time or another time.
So in terms of policy and goals, this comes directly from the town's financial policies and goals as recommended by or passed by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the Finance Committee. So these are things to keep in mind when talking about using free cash or spending capital. You'll see in the middle here, the target expenditure for for Hubbardson based off of our financial policies is 6% of the operating budget. This is pretty consistent with neighboring towns. They range anywhere from 3 to 3 to 10% of their operating budget with 6% being right in the middle. So based on those policy targets, and this is information I shared with the CIPC on your behalf, these are projected operating budgets. They're a little high or higher than we hope to be, especially given the the current economy. But you can see right out of the financial forecast, these projected operating budgets. And then what would that would mean in terms of 6%? So 6% of that would be for FY22, 588,000 or so, there's 280,000 debt built into the budget to pay for capital. And that would leave 307 pay-as-you-go capital, which is how the town has traditionally funded capital with Warren articles at town meetings, spending free cash or borrowing, using free cash moving forward. Parts of this plan are are just for information purposes. That's the last year's plan. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so for, you know, fiscal year 22 and moving on, obviously, the the projections, we try to be very conservative. Obviously, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID. We don't know what's going to happen with a lot of the free cash that's coming in. So we we really kind of stayed as conservative and on the low end of what we expected to have as we possibly could. The process for for evaluating capital was we, you know, evaluated department needs, new needs that they put forward and also needs that were left over on the the plan from the last five-year plan that we did updated last year. Some of our members visited their departments. In one of the meetings, we had the police chief, the fire chief, and the DPW had actually attend our meeting and discuss some of their needs. And there was a good back and forth between our members and them about what's really important for operations or not. We we recommended capital, capital items and capital projects that we thought were able to conservatively fit in the budget for FY22. But we prioritized important needs for the department and also prioritized life safety and worker health in that. So that's where we tried to get a good balance of operational needs, but also make sure that we we kept everyone healthy in the departments that needed it. We also looked at, you know, moving forward, as we'll get later in the presentation, for capital planning, especially for some larger items coming up later on, like fire trucks, ambulance, and also for building needs. We looked at other other alternative funding sources and how to fit in some debt. You know, debt service we have coming due. How does that fit in? And also, you know, marijuana revenue that we have potentially coming, how does that fit in? So we tried to look at multiple funding sources and not just free cash and not just overrides. All right, so here's the the meat of what we kind of went over here. We didn't feel like we were able to accomplish additional road repair. So that's been in the five-year plan, additional $100,000 every year. Our group agreed that, given the constraints of the the budget for next year, probably due to some COVID shortfalls, that we took out the $100,000 for road repair. That allows us to prioritize some of the needed capital items.
Michael, can I just interrupt? Can I interrupt real quick? Can you just just for literally 10 seconds, just explain sort of the columns and whatnot, just so we're able to follow? Or the others are able to sort of follow real quick how this works?
Absolutely. So looking on the on the the left, you know, all the way to the left, we break it up by department. So each department is kind of clustered, DPW Cemetery. And as you go down and see Fire Department, Police Department. Project title, obviously, is what are we trying to purchase or work with? And then the expenditures moving forward is FY22 is would be the budget we're all working on now for for the following fiscal year. And moving all the way out for a five-year plan. Obviously, if there's a number in that column, we're recommending it for that year. A yellow, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, yellow means that we've moved it from one place to another. We've moved it out a year.
Or change the dollar amount. So yellow is a change.
So that's that's kind of in in general what we're looking at here.
Thanks. Thank you.
And just it's it's important to note, sorry to to cut you off, green is new stuff. So as you can see, there's not a lot of new, except for in the the fifth year.
So this year, one of the items that the DPW requested was a was a mini excavator, $45,000. They're looking at a used excavator, which, you know, Travis made a great, a great presentation about how it will help them become more efficient in what they do. And we completely agree with them. But again, looking conservatively, we ended up moving that till next year in order to to fund some other projects, which again, go for for worker safety. And one of the things in the DPW department that we thought was more important this year than a mini excavator was an exhaust mitigation system down at line number six for $26,000. Right now, in the DPW barn, when they're working on trucks or whatever, especially in the winter time, the doors are closed and they have a lot of exhaust fumes inside the building. You know, with with further scrutiny on OSHA recommendations and guidelines, we really wanted to get them an exhaust system, which was also requested by the DPW, prioritize this year rather than moving that out later on. The DPW is able to do their work with the back hose. It's obviously not as efficient as it could be with an excavator. But by moving the excavator out, we're not really hampering what they've been doing. This is not as efficient as it could be. So we prioritize worker safety over that. $26,000 is not going to outfit all the bays in the garage with an exhaust mitigation system, but it'll outfit a couple. And at least that's enough to work on some trucks or have some trucks running inside. So you don't have fumes all over the all over the garage. The other thing we put in is a DPW septic system replacement. Now, the $1,500 placeholder, $1,500 is not obviously for septic replacement. But there's some concern that the septic system may be nearing its end of life. So we thought, rather than getting surprised when it finally dies in the next, you know, however, many years, that we would take a nominal amount of money and do a septic system study, not a study, just an evaluation, I guess, by a local septic company to see how much time that has. Do we need repairs? Is something we can get 10 years out of? Is it going to be gone in two years? Like I said, it is ending, it is nearing its end of life. So we thought it'd be important to spend the money now to know what we're dealing with coming up, because that is a big ticket item, obviously, we don't want to be surprised with. Moving down the list for FY22, I mean, there's Cemetery needs some just basic hand tools to work around $500. We really didn't put much much discussion into that. Firefighter turnout gear was one that Bob spoke spoke a lot about. With, again, some of the new requirements and recommendations from professional societies and from OSHA, you know, fireman, fire gear has to be washed between between uses. And the there's a lot of a lot of stress being put on the carcinogens that, you know, firemen coming with to contact all the time. One of them obviously was a couple of years ago when we we approved. When I was on the select board with you guys, we approved the exhaust mitigation system in there, and that was the first step. Their their gear currently is being washed between fires, which means that if something, another fire comes in while their gear is being sent out to be washed, because it we don't have facilities to wash that kind of gear here. You know, they're scrambling. You can't go to a fire because you don't have gear. You're trying to put somebody else's on or something along those lines. So a lot of places, and I did a little bit of looking into this afterwards, it's actually a pretty common practice that firefighters have two sets of turnout gear. So one sits in reserve and one is their main use. So if it is sent, if it is sent out for washing, they have another set there. Bob is only looking to purchase firefighter turnout gear, second set for firemen who are full-time or, you know, very active call folks. He's not going to purchase a second set for every single person who may be involved with the department. Ideally, you know, should we get a public safety building, we may want to look at a washing system, which is basically a special kind of wash machine and dryer. I think Bill knows a little bit more about that, but it does not make sense, nor can we at this point put it in the current building. But it is something we can look at doing in the future. So that was, we felt, again, you know, worker health, worker safety, we thought turnout gear was was fairly important. The other thing the Fire Department requested was $46,000 for a pickup truck. This is their main vehicle they use during the day to go to brush fires, to transport the firemen between the Breezy Hill Station, where they spend most of the day, and the main fire department, should they need to get on a fire truck rather than an ambulance. Their current, I forget the age of their current one, but it's pretty old and it's pretty beat up. So this is a replacement pickup truck to to take over the the role of the old one that they had there. We moved the green for $10,000 for portable radios. Bob originally put that in for FY22, but he indicated that there was a possibility of getting a grant in a the spring grant cycle for that. So our radios are still functional. So we moved that till next year to see we can get the grant for that. Moving down the line, a big one in the Fire Department coming up in the next couple of years is an ambulance replacement and fire truck replacement. They will need to be replaced in the future. Coming up, the ambulance replacement for $300,000 is not the new one. We just got a couple of years ago. It's for the backup one they have now, which is, again, approaching end of life pretty quickly. So I think we'll, you want to talk about funding for that now, Ryan, or is that later on?
Why don't we get through the plan first, and we'll get to the recommendations?
All right. And then moving down, the police cycle, the police cruiser for this this year, again, just a replacement cycle. We have our cruisers get beat up and a lot of time on the engine. So this is just a standard replacement cycle for the police cruiser. That's it for FY22.
Am I to assume, can I just jump in real quick? Am I to assume because that one's yellow, we actually bumped it from last year? And that it didn't bump up?
I think we changed, that was we changed the price on it, I believe, Ryan. And that's the same thing with the with the you'll notice yellow also for the Fire Department pickup truck. We had changed the price on it.
Yeah, so that that includes some some trade-in money to try and soften the FY22 blow. So originally, it was 50,000. We might be able to walk it back another 1,000 or so, but that's gambling because we don't know exact trade-in value.
So and then we also, you know, looked at the five-year plan, did the best we can to plan out for, as you can see right in front of us on the screen, remainder of the police cruiser cycles. You know, the basketball court needs a second final surfacing on that, which needs to be done. So we moved that to the following year. We, you know, skate park needs some work, the walking track needs some work. So these are all things that have merit and we agree need to be done. But we did move them, move them out a little bit since they're not, you know, there's just not a lot of room in this year's capital budget to do a lot of these things. And these are, these are capital capital items that are not necessarily in our in our in our budget per town, our working budget. These are outside alternative funding sources.
So this will be posted after the Board of Selectmen discusses it tonight. And for public consumption, this next section just details quite a bit what the departments requesting, why they're requesting, and the details they provided to the CIPC. For those who want to dig deeper, Mike did a good job of summarizing much of that. And then the spending summary. So this comes from information that I gave to the to the CIPC about available dollars. So again, projected operating budget here for FY22 is a best guess at what our budget will increase to this year. That's about a three and a half percent increase. So we will have to cut that down based off revenue. But for now, it's a placeholder. The capital target comes right from our financial policies. That's how much we're looking to spend if we want to keep everything on par based off policy. So the projected debt, this next line is what we already spend on capital or have committed based off of borrowing or or other items in the operating budget. And then the proposed capital plan, as Mike presented, is 138,000 this year from the CIPC, which would be about 170,000 lower than the target. So we would be spending intentionally if the board in the community went with the CIPC's recommendation, about 170,000 less than target. So this year's available free cash is 312,000. Typically, I recommend and the Finance Committee recommends reserving about 200,000 of free cash for operating budget use and for protecting ourselves moving into the next year. And then if you take the proposed capital plan here from the CIPC, you'd have a deficit of 26,000 or so, which would either have to eat into the reserves or we'd have to find other sources of funding for. So it's a pretty conservative plan overall. I applaud the CIPC for really digging in with the departments and making some difficult choices and recommending a plan that is so far based off the current economy, quote unquote, doable. Mike, these are the options for you were asked to address the expiring debt in 2024.
Yes.
And the municipal building issues, if you want to take it back over.
Michael, do you mind if I ask a couple of questions just based on the this this upcoming year budget? Some of the items you went through first, and then we get into that?
Sure.
So this one, you may not be able to answer, but it might be like a Bob question, but the the turnout gear. So so do you know how many 17,000 gets? Did that come up?
Yeah, it's about 2,000 per or it was 50, it was somewhere about 10, if I can correct, Ryan. It was it was around 10.
Yeah, it's about 2,500. So five to 10.
Yeah.
Okay, and I would assume, yeah, again, turnout gears probably doesn't update like iPhones do. So they don't become like if you get one and you never use it, but you need to get another one. It's probably something that that, you know, is especially if you're not using it all that often, is probably good for for a good period of time.
I believe it was 10 years they're good for. And the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, recommends, I believe it was 10 years. Don't quote me on that, but it's right around there. They have to be replaced no matter what. They have a date stamp when they're put in service. It has to be taken out at a certain time.
Okay, that's plenty of time. This is more of a global question. So have you guys found? So this process that we're going through now, which is a little more formal than than we used to with 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 the CIPC like this, and you guys, especially the experience that we have on it now, it's it's kind of a well-versed committee. So have you, and we have some some department heads who have been there for a while now, you know, Bob and and Chief Perrin, and even Travis has been there for a bit. Have you you noticed even early on in this, has there been any hesitancy for for maybe things that think that that department heads would have suggested, but they don't want to put them on there because they don't want other stuff to get bumped? Now, the reason I say it is because of the exhaust system and not getting the mini excavator. I know it wasn't a like-for-like sort of thing, but has there been any air of that throughout this process for you?
I haven't noticed any, you know, we we met with the the capital heads, you know, one meeting, and we had a pretty good back and forth with them on on to the the benefits and and merits of everything. So I didn't sense any. And, you know, we made it pretty clear to folks that there's not a whole lot of extra extra revenue or extra cash for FY22. And I think everyone seemed to understand that due to the COVID situation. You know, I certainly don't know if Ryan has heard anything through the back channels, but I didn't get that sense, Dan.
Okay. Okay, that's that's all I had. So if anyone has anything else want to jump in now, we can continue on.
And I may just I'll add one more thing. I mean, we you know, by not not getting the excavator, we I mean, we thought that the exhaust system was important anyway for worker health. But we also felt like it was important to try to give the DPW something also. We didn't want just, you know, all the other departments to get all the new new toys and and DPW be left out. So we purposely made sure that we had something in there for them, something that was a lot cheaper, but also, you know, for the health of the workers to try to give them something to this year.
Okay. All right, want to go back, call that back up, Ryan?
All right, so expiring operating budget debt. We had a good discussion about this. In 2013, the town took on a 10-year note, borrowing note to do roadwork. And we got, you know, nine miles or so of roads reconstructed at the time. That comes due as to 10 years in 2023, which means in 2024, we have $165,000 in debt service that we have a couple of options. We can either put it back in the operating budget to help address some of the structural deficits we have or go into school costs or whatever. We could reduce the size of the operating budget. So rather than adding it in for additional cost in the operating budget, you know, the select board can decide that we're going to cut the budget by $165,000. adding it in for additional cost in the operating budget, you know, the select board can decide that we're going to cut the budget by 165,000, which probably isn't going to work too well for, for, you know, keeping our services well. Or use that for continued debt service. We're already using it. It's not part of the operating budget now per se. We're not using it for day-to-day operations. We're using it to pay debt. We thought that since it's in there, the best use of that as, when it comes due in a couple of years is to continue to use it for debt. And to pay off, to, to pay off, you know, capital items really. One of the, one, one of the discussions we had was, do we use that towards helping towards a town building? Do we help it towards capital items? And we all thought the best use of that debt service would probably to pay for the bigger items that are coming in the five-year plan, right around the time this comes due, which is a new fire truck and a new ambulance. You know, especially if we're going to go forward with a municipal building and asking our residents for additional money to help fill the borrowing and mortgage on that building. We don't want to put on top of everyone's shoulders. Ours included, you know, another, another override for replacement of trucks or ambulances. So we thought the best use of this money moving forward in the plan would be to use it to fund the bigger ticket items in the fire department over the next five years.
Seems, seems less confusing to do it that way, too.
Yeah, because it's, you're, you're just, you're keeping it as debt service to just another debt. At that point.
Yep.
And then the final thing that we were tasked with was to evaluate options for municipal buildings. And, you know, certainly our town has a lot of needs. We've been over this many, many years in all different iterations between senior center and public safety building. And obviously we have the land on Route 68 that is ours to use for, for town use. We had a, you know, a good discussion about this also. And the CIPC recommends to the select board that we move forward with a public safety building. We went through iterations of senior center, town hall, all three combined, just the police station, just the fire station, just the garage bay, all, all different things. And we felt that the most, you know, the best use of, of a construction, construction monies would be to fund the police station and fire station as one combined building at this time. By doing that, opens up the opportunity to come up with a lot of solutions for other departments at that point. That opens up the slade building by moving the police department out so we can renovate it and, you know, make it more accessible for our seniors. We can make a, you know, at that point by renovating, you can have just better operations for our seniors. You can have different, instead of one large room, there can be offices, different rooms, multiple bathrooms, handicap bathrooms. That allows a lot of room for that. That also would allow some room for offices in the library to move out, which then puts the library in the running for library grants to help that building out. The other thing that would allow us to do by doing this is move out of Breezy Hills. Currently, we're renting Breezy Hills to the tune of, you know, $20,000 and change a year in lease, which could be ended at any time. You know, we're again releasing a building. Our fire apparatus is separate from where the, the guys stay and where the offices are. So we think that by doing a public safety building, it's the first, the first step and a lot of dominos that can go after that. Part of this is, you know, how if we, if we fund a public safety building, obviously that's not going to be within the town budget. That's, that's impossible to fund something like that. So we were looking, you know, at, at recommending to the board of selectmen into the town, a building loan, 40-year low-interest building loan, which we would be eligible for in town. The other thing that building a public safety building would do, which would improve our town's insurance ISO rating, which may lower everyone's homeowner cost, homeowners insurance costs, because we have a defined public safety building with all of our emergency personnel and emergency apparatus in one place. Also, you know, long-term, that would also help reduce some of the costs for, for equipment and, and engines. Right now, we have to specially order our fire trucks. We can't just buy a standard fire truck off, off a lot per se, but it doesn't fit in our building over there. And, you know, this is something we've talked about, obviously, over the years when I was on the board. You know, that building is from the 1960s. It was meant to hold, I believe it was DPW equipment. It's not meant to hold modern fire trucks. And so we have to order trucks that are lower and shorter than ours, the standard, a standard truck, which increases the cost also. So we do recommend a public safety building as the first step for our town to land on Route 68. Currently, right now, there's some site work that's been done already through some of the grants that the town has received for a senior center. The well is in, so there is some, some work done in that location there. We also talked about, you know, if we, if we present this to the town as a, you know, the first, the first step, the linchpin is as letting our, our municipal buildings at that point get upgraded. You know, how do we afford the other upgrades? Well, if we can move our town office out of the library, that's, that opens that up for library grants, which, which certainly I think our library would be a good candidate for, given the age and historical nature of it. But how do you fund some of the repairs for the slade building, which will need, you know, probably in the order of several million dollars of, of upgrades? We discussed that and, you know, one of the things we looked at was the marijuana money that's coming. We have obviously a couple facilities that are going to be coming up in town. We didn't think that it was a good idea to recommend that that money be put into general budget or anything. We don't know how long it's going to last. So we thought while we have it, our recommendation to you guys would be to use that money to upgrade the slade building. And if it's still there after the slade building upgrades are done, great, that's better for all of us. But if not, at least we've able to afford fixing up that building somewhat.
Smoke them if you got them.
That's right. So that, that's the gist of our plan. And again, you know, we do recommend a combined fire and police public safety building on that site.
Okay, just a question on that. So did you, you know, I know you were a part of this for a while. Did you, did you guys, the committee cite, you know, the, any of the, the surveys over the last five years, I'll just call it, where, where that was came in first, for lack of a better way to say it, in, in, in some of the discussions?
We did. And yeah, the planning board put out a good survey three, four years ago. And far and away, the, the number one thing people said they were, they would support for municipal buildings was a public safety complex. So we feel like there's, you know, a fair amount of support in there for that. And certainly, you know, just kind of offhandedly talking to people over the years, I heard that a lot from people as they would support a new fire department, new police department for everybody. So I feel like, you know, we all felt like there'd be a decent amount of support in town for that.
Okay, well, does anyone have any additional questions for, for Michael or the committee? No, Ryan, is there anything else you want to add to this?
No, just, you know, using the CIPC in this way to really dig in, I think has been beneficial. The, the experience that the board had was very evident when I was sitting in on it. They knew the, the history in the town and what might be supported or what might not be. So, and then also some of your comments earlier, they worked well with the department heads. The department heads respect the process. And, you know, they're looking to get everything they can to get their job done well, but understand, you know, the resource situations. And I think they like having another voice in, in the, in the process that they can, they can explain things to. So overall, very good. Impressed how hard the CIPC worked on this. These weren't just easy recommendations. They were really, really well thought out and thoughtful. And we'll see where it goes from here.
All right, well, if you guys have nothing else for us, very much appreciate you coming in again. And, and, you know, I think this is, this is a really big benefit for the town to have, to have your committee be able to be separate from us. You know, it just is, you know, from, from whatever people's preconceived notions are. It's just another way to, to be able to present a solid case and a thoughtful case. And, and, you know, appreciate you guys doing it.
Dan, we're happy to help anytime.
All right, good night.
All right, take care, guys. Thanks.
All right, ready to move on?
Yeah, so the, the CIPC recommendations will obviously inform my budget presentation to you, which is the next step in the budget process. And then the board and the finance committee has a chance to use, you know, both, both recommendations and data points to, to come up with a plan to go to town meeting. So also be helpful, I think, in the future if the board discussed some of these recommendations and, and offer their opinion on, on where we should go. We'll also do the same thing with the finance committee so we can start planning. 2024 is going to come really fast and none of these problems are going away, so.
All right, sounds good. So we will move on to item four, new business A, which is the High Street Reconstruction Project. I think we have a guest as well for this. So you want to get us going on this one?
Okay, so I'm inviting in Kevin from TEC, who we've worked with before. Kevin's a good person to bring into this conversation. Specifically, he helped us with our Lombard Road Grants as part of the Mass Works program. And we got a lot of feedback on the fact that Lombard Road and some of the other projects, Flag Road, that we, we tried were certainly worthy projects. But we're not really fitting into the state's current funding of what used to be strap grants and is now Mass Works Grants, really focusing on public safety and walkability and some of the stuff that the board has done a great job of getting funds through the tip program on. So we asked TEC to look at, and this came up in front of the board before, to look at Brigham Road and some of the other entryways into town and specifically High Street, which connects 68 on both sides and is obviously a public safety conduit for us as potential grant targets as part in, in the Mass Works Program and the Complete Streets. It's just a way to try and maximize our dollars and go after some of that big grant money that really makes a big difference in terms of infrastructure repair. So that's what we're looking at tonight. There's a, there's a proposal to do a high-level conceptual design, which Kevin's going to talk to you about, which you've seen already. But just wanted to put it into a picture for you from the engineers as to what we're looking to do or potentially fund.
Good evening, Ryan, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Dannerd. I'm a principal and Worcester Regional Director for TEC. And I'd like to start by saying thank you. It's been a pleasure serving the town on various projects over the past few years. And hopefully we can reflect on that, those successes. And a lot of what we do as a firm and as Ryan indicated, you know, helping our municipal clients try to extract every dollar that they can. So, you know, our volunteer services to try to help out with Lombard and others in these grant programs, you know, has been helpful to get attention to the projects and the vast infrastructure that you have as a town. And having just listened to that eye-opening presentation about the CIP, there's obviously a great number of needs that you have as a community. And looking at those and weighing those is obviously a critical piece of what you need to do as a board. But what I hope that you can see in the, in the past experiences in trying to identify some of these grant programs is that something like the opportunity that's in front of you for this $26,000 contract for High Street is an investment, you know, and it's an investment that in the past has reaped benefits of tenfold in construction funds that, you know, for every dollar that you might spend, you were able to receive a significant investment from the state or other agencies, you know, to invest in the infrastructure within the town walls. So, you know, different cover projects, different mass DOT funded projects. And although the, the actual funding mechanism for High Street is not yet determined, one important piece is the fact that it's important with any of these potential grant sources, whether it's tip funds, the Transportation Improvement Program, that is managed by DOT, but the funds are dictated regionally through the Monticent Regional MPO or things like Mass Works that Ryan described. You are best suited, best positioned for a positive nod on the applications when you can show several things. One is having skin in the game. So having the ability to show that the town felt that it was important enough to invest in says a lot to the agencies, the secretaries that look and evaluate these programs and which projects get funded. So the fact that you might be interested in putting up your own money to get something off the ground is critically important. Secondly, public involvement. You know, this provides an opportunity to cultivate a project that can not only involve your board, but the public in shaping what might happen out on High Street. And with a lot of these grant funding sources, you know, there's a consistent theme, as you've probably heard recently, we've heard it on Route 68 in town center, but the idea of complete streets. So this is an opportunity to really build upon these great investments that are ongoing, you know, and, and looking at the fact that we are within months of completing the design through what they call the PSN stage with DOT. That will bring those improvements from Brigham and Elm all the way up to the rec fields. This is an opportunity to get that next step ahead and look at other connectivity within the town center. You know, and this is not only along the main corridor, but also getting into some of these neighborhoods that serve multiple purposes. You know, there's the element of safety. So we have the opportunity to look at that northerly end with High Street and Ragged Hill Road at 68. And to also look at an alternative emergency services corridor. You know, so how do we get from the fire police stations, you know, if there was an issue on 68, there's an alternative corridor? That's important from a connectivity standpoint for responsiveness for those emergency services. So there's many different elements for the types of merits that can be built into this project, you know, the, the results that can come out of it. But when you look at the funding scheme and whether it's a tip avenue, Mass Works Avenue, or other sources, what is most important is to plan for success, you know. And, and that starts with a, an understanding of the scope of, you know, that three-quarters of a mile or so that is from end to end on High Street. It builds off other momentum from other projects like the Town Center Project, but ultimately is going to inform all of us in what the options may be along High Street. And then we can prepare estimates based on what we hear and what we gather and what we recommend that would be a right fit for the, the rural nature of that roadway, but yet can serve those multiple purposes that we're trying to hit. So that's a quick summary of, of what we look to do, but more importantly, the importance of getting started with another project so that we can hopefully celebrate, you know, something that is more than a tenfold return on your dollars spent here in what comes back to the town.
Great, you know, thanks for, for presenting it like that, too. And, and, you know, we've been thinking about High Street. High Street was on our, on sort of next on our complete streets. We did get the sidewalk in front of, in front of the school on Elm Street through Complete Streets a few years ago. And we did try for High Street, didn't get it, maybe a year and a half ago, Ryan-ish, right? Not, yeah. So, and, and we want to make sure, because, you know, that's why we're talking about it, that, that, you know, we, we think we have a chance to, right? Even though it's only 26,000, as, as you've heard recently in our, in the most recent presentation, that, that, that's a lot of money to us. So, you know, the Complete Streets, we, we did fail in that. And then, yeah, actually, I was on a conference call with, with Brett Harris and Ryan and others for the, from the MRPC regarding, you know, potential avenues for funding for this sort of stuff. And, you know, we used to rely pretty heavily on strap grants. And, and that, the old way of kind of went away. And so our towns, the more rural, became less successful in those as it wrapped into a Mass Works Program. We found that out a couple of years in a row on Lombard Road. So I guess I'm just saying that out loud to, to talk about a couple of the funding sources that you had, had referenced. You know, the, that we think we, we actually have a, a pretty good shot with, with how High Street, you know, is situated within the course of our town.
Yes, and I, you know, just to reflect on some of those things, too, that the importance, as you look at the checklist items that a number of those agencies are looking for, you know, the, the presence of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, for one, is a checklist on a lot of these grant sources where, you know, as we look at the connectivity in the town center and the fact of where High Street sits, there is an opportunity there that may not have existed on other corridors where that increases the attractiveness for funding. When we can check those boxes that Um when we can check those boxes that, you know, we're addressing safety elements related to all users, so that's an important. Discriminating factor here for High Street for why it kind of sits as a different and uh very interesting opportunity for trying to reach out for those funds.
Okay, and then how about from a um uh now, we we would improve theoretically. Safety would be improved uh because the sidewalks would be in and pavement would be in and improved and all that. However, I am positive High Street residents would say safety would go down, because then we would have a uh speedway. To come through, so are there some things that that could be thought of right off the bat that that would um you know, dissuade those who would wanna do that? Um through an area like that?
Well, we've got a lot of tools in the toolbox, um and it's actually been a topic of um. Uh not just Hubbard Sten, but several communities for trying to improve roadways um without, you know. Making it overly wide, without impacting critical resources, you know, really old um street trees that. Want, you know, you wanna preserve um and certain elements of those are important to keep in mind, too, because. There can be ways to improve the infrastructure, to upgrade the infrastructure, because the road's in rough shape, right? So there's. The opportunity to improve the surface, but also how it's used without making it a a raceway, speedway, or something that. Uh would be strictly applying D O Ts standards to a local roadway, which is not something that we'd look to do. It's it's really that context sensitive environment, but you know, there can be a number of different pieces and parts where we can include traffic calming. But it doesn't mean and and the way we approach projects is not the standard, okay, twelve foot lanes and wide shoulders and all these things. Uh we're looking at opportunities that um you know, could be a side path, you know, maintaining the same relative width of the road. Uh but maybe doing it in a different way, you know, we're working uh in another community where. In Western Massachusetts, we're looking at a pedestrian lane, which is not curved, not. A full separated sidewalk, but a way to provide a place for pedestrians that has a lesser impact, so. You know, there are many alternatives that we can explore, um but I think what we'd like to do is is really leave that for the process that's in front of us. So that we can do our research, look at the ideas, take the measurements uh and invite comment from. Uh the experiences of those residents to say, you know, what have you seen, you know, and um. Maybe reach out to M R P C to see if they can collect some other, you know, daily and weekly traffic counts with us for us. Um to best inform, you know, what those speeds are like, because you know, with those two counters that you can put down on the road. Um you can tell how many cars are going, the classification of those vehicles, you know, whether it's a car, truck, motorcycle. Um but you can also get speed and you can get reliable speeds in different times of the day. So, you know, we could pick apart, is it a commuter traffic trend, you know, between seven and nine in the morning and four and six in the afternoon? Or is it in the middle of the day when traffic might be very light, so. Uh that's that's part of what we would evaluate um as well as what cross section of roadway and other improvements make sense. Given the context of stone walls and trees, driveways um and other features.
Um and I guess just one more for me, so so we've done, you know, probably upwards to a half million dollars with you guys over the last four years or so. Um the twenty six thousand, in your opinion, just gonna ask you point blank, is is that a good deal? Is that like reflective of of a of a of a long um relatively long, you know, business relationship that we've got with you?
Uh it is, and I think that's um uh you know, the kind of the unseen numbers are the ones that, you know, we donate along the way to with. Uh you know, things like the Mass Works Grant this past year where it didn't cost the town a dollar to go through that process. Um but I would also say, when you look at the Route sixty eight corridor that um we're almost through with. Um I think the the past experiences and those values, when you look at that. It was four and a half million, now it's five point two million as far as a project estimate. Typical engineering fees are between ten and fifteen percent on a project like that, um and we are well below ten percent. With the fees that we've assessed towards Route sixty eight, so um we don't ever believe in getting comfortable, you know, and. And I think with how we looked at High Street and Brigham, we're saying, okay, well, if if we have to do both at the same time. We don't need to have the same fee, we can give a credit towards that, but uh you know, we're not inflating our numbers just to cut them down. But for that case, we saw inefficiencies of doing potentially two projects at once uh without knowing what budget you had. Um if we're focusing just on High Street, that is a good deal.
Okay, alright, um anybody have any other questions for uh Kevin? Alright, Ryan, if you could just let us know here, so we have a little asterisk next to this on our agenda uh relative to, you know, could could involve a vote. Uh is the, could you just go into um maybe what your expectations were from us tonight, if anything, or if this is just more of a a. Um you know, a a detailed information session, which which we appreciate Kevin doing.
Well, if you'll just indulge me for a minute, the the genesis of this was the board's looking for the next opportunities after Town Center. Now that that's finalized and funded, it's not the work's not complete, but the the work on our end is complete, you know, we're just waiting to execute the project. So um you mentioned Brigham, Brigham is another safety concern, an entryway into town in a in a road area that needs help. So those were two potential areas that that I brought to the board, that have been brought to the board many times before as places to to look at. So it's, we're never gonna fund our entire road maintenance plan, I'm not surprising anybody by saying that, so we're we're looking for ways to. To invest a little bit of money to get a lot of money at the end, it's never a little bit of money, but smaller dollars than than full reconstruction projects. So we we have some town center engineering money. That we could put towards this if we wanted to to try and fund and move the next project forward. And of course, you have the opportunity to go in front of Town Meeting in June to fund this or or any other road maintenance project um or engineering project, so. It's up to the board, I want the board to be fully informed and to direct us on 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 what is next. So if um if if you want me to really dig into the finances and bring this back for a vote, can do that. If you wanna direct us to fund it right now, you can do that, or if you wanna just. Think it through and add it to the to road maintenance plan, that's an option, too. I'm just looking for direction from the board on some of these hanging projects.
So we we, you know, I I, you know, um you you had. Reference previously uh and and just did again that there were some funds remaining um in the the Town Center uh engineering. Um and then there were a few, I believe you sent an email a while ago, that that actually figured out how to pay for this without um too much. Uh of a headache, uh is that right?
Yes, this could be, I mean, I'd wanna redo the numbers again, just to be sure, but but this could be fit into the. To the F, to the current year's budget, knowing that if you spend those funds and they're not available for something else, so just wanna make sure this is a priority. And I I do think this could be funded in in the current budget scheme.
Well, I'm definitely, I mean, I know bringing it up, this is a sort of keep moving forward thing, and I know that the Town Center Committee, you know, was was in favor of this, bringing it up in the first place. About that that whole keep moving forward, whether or not, you know, ultimately this thing um gets built while we're, any of us are on the board or not. But that I think that's that was the point for a uh overall, you know, uh relatively small investment, so. But I think that the diligence is because the way you just indicated, we would probably um need to see specific numbers on there, so we understand it. And not just sort of vote um hoping that um hoping that you're right, and I know you did it before, but you know, can we can we just throw that? On the agenda again to uh to actually specifically vote for it, once you can outline how that would be funded for our next meeting next week?
Absolutely, and Kevin mixed in, I just wanna make sure this is clear for for High Street residents that are that are going to watch this or that are interested. This is to get the the options of what to do with High Street on the table, there's no plan, there's no, besides fix the road, right? Like, that's the plan, so there's there's nothing currently structured, this is an investigation to come up with the idea of what to do, a high conceptual design. Uh which would give us options in terms of, you know, where to place this, whether it's in the capital plan, the road maintenance plan, or hopefully grant funding. So I I know that was said, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear, and yes, of course, I can get those together for you and bring it up soon.
Okay, and just from experience, so we, it cost us twenty to twenty five thousand dollars to do this exact same thing five years ago, four to five years ago on the Town Center. And we got, you know, more than I was expecting from it, so um you know, um. Not to to promise for you, Kevin, but I think I just did. Um so something like this, you know, it we had a just a, it was just what it sounds like, a schematic design of sort of how it would look like and. And a cartoon, and I think that might even still be on our town website of what that looked like, you know, four years ago, so it is, it's not um, it's not wasteful by any means. It's it's uh, you know, a thoughtful presentation for a high level design like Ryan said.
Exactly, and just to to reconfirm, um you know, we don't have any preconceived notions for what will be the most appropriate out there. Um but as Ryan said, this is really um the catalyst for having those discussions, you know, and. And doing that investigation and coming up with a plan that's um collaborative and inclusive. Of um department considerations, the public's considerations, you know, because uh uh those are the ones that will use it every day, so um. Uh we wanna make sure that it fits in the context of what's there, uh but ultimately, you know, we will work as hard as we can to try to uh find and secure. Those funds for you.
Okay, um anything else uh for Kevin, anybody? Nope, okay, well, thanks a lot for coming in.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, be safe.
Alright, uh next will be uh item four B, the Town Administrator Annual Evaluation.
Okay, so this is um part of the, it's actually in the in the Town Charter and a requirement for the board to complete an evaluation of the Town Administrator. So bringing it up now, so you can develop a timeline and a process for for doing that. Um what what we're looking for here is whether or not you'll deviate from the past process that you've evaluated me on in the last three years. And a potential timeline for you to to complete this, and then I can, you know, help facilitate that for you.
Okay, well, we've done it a few different ways, um and and I think the way it starts off with is me sending out the template to everybody. All of you have access to previous year evaluations on the um Google Drive account, so you can just sort of see how how that went. But typically, it's a uh it's a four or five page um rating uh with questions, I don't know, a dozen questions, maybe from a zero to. Ten or twelve, I know, I'm I'm not exactly sure, uh exactly, maybe eleven, but basically, uh rating, um you know, your opinion on on Ryan's performance. And then an area to comment on all that, um and um it's, you know, for the purposes of his contract. Uh that's in his contract, it's for the purposes of um uh bonuses, a bonus in his contract. So so it's it's important on a number of different factors, so um you know, we're just bringing it up now, Ryan, when was the last one complete? Do you know offhand?
It's typically completed by the end of February.
Alright, well, why don't we just do that then, so um I don't have the the meeting schedule in our in my hands right now, but if we can um. You know, I'll I'll take the next step and send it out to everybody, and then um in that email, I'll I'll just look at the 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 the. Meeting schedule into that and and throw out a date that we can, we can have and and um go from there, okay?
The only thing I ask, same thing I ask every year, is that I just get five days to look at them. Uh and speak with people about them before they're before they're public, uh that's not mandatory, I'm just just asking a chance to. To take a peek at them before, see what see what's coming, you know?
Twelve hours, you got twelve hours.
You can do a lot in twelve hours.
Alright, no problem, uh I will take that into consideration um without a doubt, so, okay, well, so the next item is the Police Chief Contract. Um item four C.
Hey, so this is a contract year for Chief Perrin. Um he's done several contracts with the town now, and uh these contracts are typically three-year employment agreements. So his expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and based off of budget constraints and. A bunch of different timelines, we we are trying to get through all of our negotiations. I wouldn't say early, but timely this year, so we did complete, uh on your behalf, I negotiated with Chief Perrin, it was a very simple negotiation. Um it, I'm not surprising anyone by saying this is, this is likely his last contract uh with the town, according to him. Um based off of his life goals, et cetera, and we did meet an executive session and talk about, talk about these things. So I will present in the form of a contract for the board to comment on or vote, just call that up for you. So this is the same exact contract, the only changes to the contract are, I made it look a little prettier. And then um everything in yellow, which I'll discuss briefly, so this agreement would be effective from the July first, twenty twenty one to. June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, there are provisions for ending the contract early. And continuing the contract as any contract that the town does have includes. And this is a public contract, and his old contract's public, if if people wanna take a look. So the the town agreed to a um a two-two-one structure, so that's cost of living adjustment, so a two percent. In F Y twenty-two, a two percent in twenty-three, and a one percent in twenty-four. For meets expectations performance, and if chief exceeds expectations, um which in full disclosure, he has. For the most part, in his his most recent contracts, hit that marker, he would get an additional one percent for a max cola contract of three, three-two. Then um a five hundred dollar increase in his longevity stipend. Uh he gets, he's one of the longest-serving full-time employees in town, and that longevity stipend would be increased to four thousand. Those are the only monetary changes to the contract, and the last time, uh it should be noted, last time, the contract was a three and a half, three and a half, three and a half max cola. Uh with with other. With other benefits included, and then this this part here is highlighted, the benefit section, his contract used to say that. He would get whatever the union contract said, and Town Council advised that we. Because this is a non-union employee that is contracted, that we spell out his benefits, so there's no change. This is the current police contract, and based off of um negotiations with the current contract, this is the same benefits that he would get in a new contract. It's just spelled out, so there's no changes, it's just written out, what the holidays are, what the sick leave is, and vacation. And then um that's it, so it was a very straightforward negotiation. Very amicable, and you know, we did discuss this in detail uh in executive session, so looking to publicly present this. And uh if you are ready to either amend or vote.
Okay, um so I guess we we can discuss, or we can uh make a motion, or wherever we're at here, so uh we've talked about it before.
Can you guys hear me now, or what is the problem on my end?
Yep, uh there's a lot now, uh yep.
Okay, I'll put it in the form of a motion, and we can still discuss it if anybody wants to, but I would move to accept uh the contract for Chief Perrin as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, um second it, is there any discussion? I have one question, Ryan, did you reference an actual age before this for us? For Chief of Police?
Um in in some of the discussions, yes, I did reference an age, um it's, it it is not sixty. As as I had mentioned it to the board. There is no. Say no retirement cap, except for whatever Worcester Regional has as a cap.
Okay. Uh any other discussion? No, okay, we will take a vote, uh we roll call, Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chris. Alright, three more years with Chief Perrin. Until his next last contract. Alright, uh, that was easy, um. Please tell him I said that, um, and the next item is the um. Item four D, which is the Board of Selectmen's Goals Review, you know, I I think we've we've talked about bringing this up, uh. More often than we used to, and um, you know, we can give it whatever level of attention we want, but. Seeing as this is sort of the first um go at it like this, I I think, um. You know, it probably makes sense to to sort of review them briefly and and, you know, individually or collectively determine, you know, whether to uh. To take further action on items or not, or whatnot, so I guess, um, wanna you wanna start with yourself there, Ryan, or 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 do you want to do that later?
I will um briefly go through mine and can go into detail. More detail if you want, so I'll pick out a couple and just comment on on their. Where we're at with it, so um, community outreach. I I feel like I'm well underway with the EDC Coordinator position and goals, and the EDC's been doing a lot of great work. Um, there'll be even more work after the surveys complete, and they get some data points for their work, so. Very happy with our involvement there in EDC. Committed to office hours despite the challenges of COVID, and I feel like I've been as accessible accessible as I could be. Um, given, given what we've got going on, so. The Hubbardson twenty thirty workshop, this comes up a few times. So what I mean by that is, we're finalizing a master plan. We are talking about what to do with, you know, expiring debt and buildings and and all these. These things that Hubbardson have been working on for a long time, uh, repairing High Street is an example. So I'd like to get a member of every board together to talk about these things, um, and I feel like I'm I'm making progress. In terms of talking to the CIPC about long-term costs, talking to the planning board about their master plan efforts. And I feel like this goal will be accomplished by the end of the year. And it's really just bringing everyone together to to try and unify efforts and really not waste resources, because we just don't have enough. Um, the town-owned land projects, we will have a forestry plan for you this spring, and cell service continues to move along. Although not as fast as we want, it it is moving. Uh, in terms of departments, all of these goals are. Are certainly on target, I can get into any of them in more detail if you want, but um, we're hitting our department goals across the board. Human resources, you you've seen this work, I've been focusing on it heavy, the handbook is complete. I've been in, I've implemented most of the findings from the HR study so far. We have engaged an employee to focus specifically on the files and compliance by the end of twenty-one, which is a goal. And then we'll be bringing the salaries and wages, and have been including that in all of our discussions with you all along. The intern program, I just be honest, I just don't think we're gonna get to that this year, mostly because. They're just not working the way they used to right now, but definitely an item to peg for the future. Budget and finance, um, Kelly will be working on this, this will be her next big project, finalizing these policies, so that'll be completed. This uh GFOA award, it's, it costs a little money to file for this, and I think it's important because it creates a transparent budget document. I'm not gonna file for the award this year, just because um, it's one year away. So this year's budget document, you'll see, includes a lot of extra stuff that they're looking for in a fully transparent budget document, so this will be an item for next year.
Sure, we all know it, but what does GFOA mean?
The um government financial oversight and accounting.
Ah.
Something like that. But it's, um, they put out a document on what towns should do to present budgets to their public. And I've been building my budget document towards those goals for the last three years. So that I can get you a budget document that is consistent and meets all of these, you know, transparency metrics. Uh, finalize our agreements, we're almost there, we have a tentative agreement with the DPW, we just finished the police chief. Uh, you're working with me, and we'll be talking about police again tonight, so all of those should be done well before March. And then infrastructure, uh, we've been focusing a lot on infrastructure, the only one you probably don't know about yet, but will soon is. Uh, been putting together a community compact grant when they finally opened the funding, which they just did today. To talk about um geo-coding and marking all of our infrastructure assets like culverts and bridges. And we talked about this before, I do have an estimate for it, and we'll have a a presentation for you soon on. What that might look like if we were to get the award. So my overall goals were to apply for a stamp certificate, uh, the small town administrative certificate, I I will be able to do that in the spring. Once I hit my three-year mark, which is in February. The twenty thirty plan I talked about, and then I do believe will be fully HR compliant by the end of twenty-one. And that sounds terrible to include as a goal, like not being compliant, but there's not many people who are fully compliant with all. HR laws, um, because they change constantly, and there's a lot of small towns out there, so. We're very, very close, and we're just being picky at this point, which is good, we want to be.
Okay, great, thanks for the update, um, any questions, Ryan? No, okay. Okay, um, I I guess I'll lead us off anyway, um, go through them sort of quickly, and anybody stop me at any point, please. Um, the first being prioritizing road maintenance, uh, committing to large and small repair projects outlined in the road maintenance plan. Best money to road repair where possible, communicate status of the plan to the public. Uh, I think we're doing that, um, as expected, because that was always part of our our plan there, and and we're looking for. Other ways to, um, you know, repair roads, uh, like we just had, uh, presentation-wise with. With Kevin from TEC and High Street and talking about Brigham Road and whatnot, so I think we're we're doing what we we had hoped to uh begin there. Um, the next item Ryan just touched on, which is continue to develop a plan to replace, repair, restore municipal building space. I think the point of putting it up here and talking about it was to get everybody thinking about it, and clearly, Ryan, you're thinking about it, because it's on your goals, and we've made it a priority for you. The CIPC is clearly thinking about it, that that was, you know, sort of a major focus of what they had as well, so. Um, the point was is not to stick our heads in the sand on this item, that has to happen sometime in the future. And and so I think that's that's something that's, uh, you know, again, we're not necessarily directly, um, um. Working on it all the time, but something we've we've made a focus for the town itself. Uh, the next investigate execute the sale use of town-owned land, um, I guess, Ryan, I'd I'd ask you, uh, I know we we've done a little. On that, and and Jeff, you as well, uh, um, what are your thoughts there?
So we um completed the sale of of all the Ragged Hill lots, which was a major focus of the board this year and last. And the um, I I brought a list of town-owned land to you not too long ago, and you've instructed me to. Bring you options with that list, so I feel like you will have a. You'll you'll smash that goal, you're gonna, you're gonna hit that goal fully, um, and see what options are out there, which is good, because we shouldn't have land that's. Not being used, that present a financial opportunity for the town.
You're gonna call that back up for us, okay. Um, the next was coordinate with Parks Department to execute their five-year strategic plan, ensure the long-term viability of Curtis Recreational Field. You know, I know we haven't done any of this directly, we've been kind of trying to have them, or they've been wanting to get on for at least a month. Um, which hasn't quite worked out for scheduling purposes, um, obviously, we have the CIPC. In in contact with them, because they have to put what their um, their wants and needs are, um, to them, and we just talked about a few of those there, but. I don't know if anyone wants to 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 chime in on that, but I I think we, we're we're looking to to hear what they have to say, we just haven't quite hooked up yet. Is that fa- is that fair? I was talking to you, Ryan, kind of.
Yes, so, um, they've been trying to meet, and we've been trying to meet, and it's not for lack of trying, so they they should be back on your agenda. In January or February.
Okay.
To have that coordination meeting.
Okay.
It's back to me, right, sorry?
Yep. Next was, uh, work on sustainable options for seniors and senior center of COVID nineteen environment beyond, find ways to provide services even. Even with the potential of temporary closures, so I was definitely the one who wanted to put this on there. And, you know, I I don't think we've gotten very far at all with this, we obviously had. A decision to make based on some not, um, uh, fantastic bids for. Um, some outdoor space, um, you know, I don't I don't know, Ryan, is there is there anything? Further that that um, that you've done, I guess, on our behalf relative to to something in this realm?
This one's really hard, and and I I hope we keep focusing on it, um. It's in the back of my mind, these long-term projects of. Infrastructure to increase the walkability in the town center for for our seniors. Not just our students walking to school, but seniors as well, they they use those those roadways, and, you know, they're not great, as you know, from putting so much time into the town center. Um, we did. We were able to help create some more space in the fall, the the winter's gonna be a challenge, so we're doing everything we can in coordinating with the Board of Health. To keep the senior center open in a very limited and safe capacity, and and that's our focus, is to provide just a, just some outlet. Um, but as you mentioned, the the cost for creating an outdoor space, which also wouldn't solve the, um. You know, the winter problem was was very prohibitive. Um, you know, the s- the smallest quote we had was a hundred and sixty thousand to build a deck, so. Um, it's been tough.
You know, if, um, you know, again, this is such a hard question in COVID time here, but. You know, we don't have a very big senior center, as we all know, are are are, you know. Other towns getting together with other that have senior centers with seniors that. That maybe don't have receptive ones or big enough ones in their own towns that you know of. I know you don't really want a lot of travel in COVID times either.
That's the problem is, you know, you always think sharing resources is is a way to solve some of these problems, but this is a, this is one time where you can't.
Yeah.
So other towns don't want, they do want to help our seniors, but they don't want that cross. In into to max out capacities, just because of the chance of spreading. And you'll see in the COVID update that, you know, the towns around us are all red, so we might be good for those, but we wouldn't want necessarily people coming here, and. It's just no good answer, but Claudia has done an amazing job, um, visiting and talking with other senior centers, we went. Her and I went and visited Rutland to figure out what it is they're doing. Um, she's communicated with others to try and get ideas on how to run programming. Um, they do a lot outside, they do a lot of delivery and visiting, so, um. You know, it it's definitely not, you know, we could try and do more at the executive level, but the the senior center is really doing a good job of providing services. And supporting them, I think, is is crucial.
Okay, well, thanks for the update. Okay, next, uh, next item, um. Is a little complicated as well right now, build on improved relationship with QRSD administration, continue to work with other Quapton towns on the annual QRSD assessment process. Finalize a plan to approach QRSD early in the budget process, establishing what each town can afford to contribute, so this is definitely still part of the plan. I think when this was contemplated, um, we didn't hope that the COVID stuff was still. As strong as it is, but it clearly is, so I know that many items relative to things like this have just had to take a backseat. Not not because they're less important than safety, uh, which is of paramount importance, but. It's absolutely unanswerable right now with the way funding is and the way projected funding might be next year from the state and all that, so I think. I think this is something to to keep on there, and and we've done a lot of work in the last year and a half on it, so, um, we just have to, we have to be patient. Um, and then the next one, work with the the Economic Development Committee to use, uh, Route sixty-eight north-south and town center projects as centerpieces. To attract new small businesses to the improved Route sixty-eight trunk corridor area. So, you know, I mean, I don't, I think the work with the Economic Development Committee probably hasn't, um, been directly. Um, you know, a a result of of how Katie has helped. Um, you know, sort of get the word out, uh, about, you know, where the hell Hubbardson is, um, but I think, um. You know, I I don't know, I I, you know, this is something not to ignore, but I don't know, Katie, if you have anything to to add on this?
Yeah, um, I, the the EDC and uh is a good group, and we are really sitting down, and we have really good meetings. Trying to think processes out and how to tweak certain things, um, we did have a few really good questions on the survey. That is is piquing some attention on Facebook, and people are questioning what we were thinking and what we're doing, but. Again, it's it's sometimes, I think the EDC has some really good ideas about maybe tweaking just a few little bylaws. And not upheaving the whole apple cart, but it would invite a lot of people. To be able to have something a little bit bigger than what is currently allowed in the town of Hubbardson, so I think, I think the EDC is on a really good. Road right now, and I, we're we're working really hard to try to keep it on a good road, so. That, yeah, just doing happy fun things like Hubbardson Light Fight and frozen assets and all that stuff, I think we're all trying to work together to try to. Find where the hell is Hubbardson.
Thank you.
I've been taking peeks at the um, results as they come in for the survey, and I can tell you, um. It would be, it would benefit the Board of Selectmen to invite the EDC and for one of your joint meetings and talk about. Um, coordination of efforts and and getting out the information about some of these decisions, because it it looks like. People are supportive but want to know more, right, which is good, so. Um, that might be the result of some of these data points is, the EDC's been kind of working to give you some recommendations. And you've been waiting for that, and maybe coming together and getting a check-in would be a, you know, a good thing.
Well, there's no, um, no time like the present, right, so, at least for adding, um, a request to the EDC. To come to one of our meetings in, you know, early March, so, could you do that, could you reach out and at least put it on there, and we can? We could try to work, uh, work to to something towards then, does that sound reasonable to you, Katie?
Yeah, I don't see why they wouldn't want to come for a meeting, I mean, they're, they really are working really hard to try to. Get the word out of some good ideas that they really have, you know, for for tweaks, so, yeah, I'm 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 sure they would.
Alright, sounds good. Okay, and I think I saw one more on there, Ryan? So this was reach out to the Board of Selectmen liaisons to other town committees and boards to share responsibility on what's going on, offer help. And improve communication and into implementing the overall master plan for the town, so this was, this was one we we talked about. Um, and and, you know, I know, again, Katie, I, you had, you had, um, a a strong opinion on on this as well, um. And, you know, I know you've you've, uh, been able to update us on on some of the, just like you did, right there, on the the most previous one. Um, and then same for some of the things I've been able to do, Town Center Committee update-wise, um, but I do think, um. You know, we haven't done much of this overall outside of that, whereas, you know, whether us as liaisons have reached out to conservation or parks or whatever else. This is definitely something that, um, um, you know, we had talked about doing, which I don't, I don't think we've we've done enough yet, so I don't know if anyone else has anything else. They want to add to that.
I've been reaching out, and I've I've sat through, like, some of the meetings, either I watch them after the fact. And, you know, just to keep, you know, to just know what's going on, so that way, if, like, say the Board of Selectmen, we're having a meeting, and we need to talk about something. At least I have some background info on it, you know what I mean, so this, there's only a handful for each of us that. Actually have real meetings, because some of them just, they don't have meetings, it's just like a, you know, a group like the Semitary Commission and stuff. Where it's not like the same kind of thing as like the planning board would be and how intense they work, so, I mean. My whole thought behind that was, if we just sit and watch the videos, or, you know, sit there quietly, just check in. Maybe email the chair, whatever, however works for you, but at least if we have a clue what's going on, I mean, I think the town. Would flow a lot more smoothly if you, you know, if you actually, you know, we all had a clue what's going on in our, in the other committees that. Just to make the town flow better.
And it is easy, I actually, over the last six months, I went to, uh, or, you know, participated on Zoom, on on a Board of Health meeting, on a Planning Board meeting, and on a. Conservation Commission meeting, and it 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 does, and it, you know, it's pretty easy to do and and informative, so it doesn't take all that much time, so, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, the CIPC meetings, I just sat there, I didn't have my video on or my mic or anything, I just sat there and listened, you know, didn't. Say anything, didn't bother them, just listening to what's going on, you know, so.
I bet that was hard for you.
Yeah. At least the kids could talk in the background, and I wasn't listening from every five seconds.
Yeah. Okay, um, okay, well, I I think that's the sort of last one we had there, it sounds like we've got. Done done some good things and have have some work to do, uh, any, anyone else wants to add to this conversation? Uh, no, okay, well, Ryan, so you. No, okay, well, Ryan, so you, we're we're talking about doing this. I'm glad we did. You know, thanks for for recommending it. Chris, you know, a long, long time ago, I know it's been now, but so it feels like, you know, quarterly, at least on this, and monthly at most. So again, I know it's it's like early January now. Feels like maybe maybe in early March would be the next time we could sort of update things and and that would be a couple of months before the the end of the fiscal year anyway, so you guys all right with that? Okay, all right, Ryan, you want to put it on, go ahead, Chris, you saying something?
No, I I I agree. That would be great to do that.
Sounds good. All right, well, Ryan, you want to just put it on there for us? Whatever makes sense.
Late February, early March, I got it.
Sounds good. Okay, next item, old business. I don't have any. Anybody have any old business they want to bring up now? Not on the agenda, no? Okay, so we can move to the the Town Administrator Report, which is you again, Ryan.
Okay, so this is the New Year's Eve COVID nineteen community level data report that I think is has been a great instrument for us to relay this information to the community. And we have been working as a group to provide this information to the community. It doesn't really change the way we're doing business. It just informs people about about what's going on. So right now, we're a green community. It means less than fifteen, more than ten for for our size town of current COVID cases. So this means that we have had a lower positivity rate and no change in case counts, but we've had an increase in total case count, so we are adding cases but dropping cases off the active list, if that makes sense. So we are still seeing COVID, but not at a level of our peer towns. And my report will show you that the towns around us, first of all, we had a lower rate than we did last week, which is, which is good news. We want to see those numbers going down. But our border towns Westminster, Gardner, Princeton, Rutland are all red and Berry and Templeton are yellow, which means they're all higher as I referenced in status than us. And that's, that takes into account population size as well in in the new way that they present the data, which is a better way, in my opinion. So no change in our statuses, just providing you this information. And again, we're just asking people, do not come to our town offices. An example of that went out with the fire department. They are starting their burn permits. You can print those online and email them in or drop them off. We we cannot. We just had a fire department around us that had a a big outbreak of COVID and we had an outbreak in our dispatch center as well. That would crush our department. We would be relying on other departments and it would be very expensive. So it it's not that we don't want to see people or that we're necessarily afraid of the virus. It's that we we don't want to have a disruption in our fire and ambulance services because one case would would really shut us down. And just trying to convey that to folks. So in terms of our department work, we are, you know, catching up over the holidays for all those information requests. People really focus on on, you know, getting things done in the new year. So we actually do see an increase after January first of of increases as people look to get things done. So that's great. The, I finished the budget request with everybody and I also met with the Gardener Chamber of Commerce. They're pushing for a large regional effort on kind of combining things. They were very interested in our special events because of the light fight. Very interested in, you know, our our little but strong EDC and some of the goals that they have. So I was able to facilitate them inviting Whitney from our EDC to to participate with me in that committee. I think that'll bear some fruit in terms of what we're trying to get done with economic development. Then lastly, this is an update that I know Katie was at least asking about the Senate passed Bill S two nine eight three, which is changing our charter and changing your name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. The House was supposed to provide me an update about it tonight. There's only one more day for them to get it through, but there's a chance that it gets through this session. And will be taken up in the next month or two, which would change our charter in order to change your name. In terms of financial management, as I said, I have all my budget requests except for the regional assessments, which usually come late. I expect those to be later than normal. As Dan alluded to, the educational finance is you know, people, people have thoughts all around what what that's going to look like. We have no idea, so just be guessing at this point, but we are tracking it and trying to continue to continue to work with them to get information. The state's also probably going to be slow with their budget. Normally, we get the governor's budget around January twentieth and I'd I'd be surprised if we got it on time this year, especially since they just passed their last budget. So what this means for you is my budget's going to be estimates and me really digging around to try and find, you know, best guesses on revenue and expenses for some of those bigger things. Just something to consider when I'm putting together and presenting my budget. Okay, and then I want to show you did this jump to a spreadsheet? Make sure you're following me. Give me a thumbs up if you're looking at a spreadsheet right now. Okay, so this is this is important. So the CARES Act was extended. So the federal government allowed states to continue to spend money under the CARES Act. And the state has allowed the towns to spend their money. We just, we've been talking about this all year, so. What they didn't do. Yes.
I don't have a spreadsheet.
You can't see a spreadsheet?
See it now. Well, I saw it. Now it's gone.
Pop that back up. Okay, so bottom line upfront, the the state is allowing us to continue to expend monies that we didn't expend. Right, that's very clear, right? So the total CARES Act approval the town of Hubbardston got was four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to spend before December thirtieth, twenty twenty. What happened was they extended the deadline, saying that we can continue to spend that money as long as we don't go over that amount. So what this is showing you is what we've spent so far. So on the left here, you'll see these are FY twenty, so that was before July first, how much we spent. So our total expenditure was seventy-six thousand. Of all of those expenses, we were reimbursed thirty-eight thousand from the federal government through FEMA grants. And then it only hit our CARES total at thirty-eight thousand. So this was primarily, we really ramped up police coverage in the beginning of the COVID scare, really, the pandemic. We did lessen that to just enhanced patrols at at some point, probably in late April. We did some sanitizing. We built structures to protect us and protect our staff from the public and added a lot of IT resources. And then that continued on July one, when we knew this wasn't just going to be a three-month thing. We invested pretty heavily in some equipment that we needed for the fire department. Some overnight and coverage for the fire department and enhanced police shifts continued. We invested in our senior center with outdoor tents and to help them with their programming. A lot of IT resources to help our staff work remotely when necessary, or in case there were close contacts, et cetera, so we wouldn't lose everybody. And then a lot of barrier and sign work. This was putting up Plexiglas and doing things that people are pretty familiar with now. Then another big expense that didn't get reimbursed by FEMA was voting. To run the election this year was very expensive. We had to add a lot of staff. A lot of extra PPE measures and you notice we didn't have some of the lines that other people had. It's because we added some voting equipment to make voting more efficient. And I think that paid dividends and reduced risk. So on the right here, you'll see that so far we've requested three hundred and thirty-four thousand of our four hundred and twenty-two thousand. So that's what we have in our coffers currently. And then these two numbers here, we've expended either in a range of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand of cares to three hundred and forty-seven. And that is directly related to this ambulance equipment. So we purchased an ALS monitor to make sure our second ambulance was functional. At an ALS level, this helps us provide a higher level of care and it's it's also really necessary in a COVID environment because we could lose because of an exposure ambulance one and then not have a second ambulance. And second, we invested in a power lift. And I know you've you've seen this before, but this allows us to not only keep our our firefighters in EMTs safe from lifting, et cetera, but also to transport, transport patients in a more COVID-friendly way, socially distanced, less contact with the patient. And as I said, we're really trying to limit exposures for our staff because one outbreak in our department would really shut our fire department down. So we are negotiating with FEMA right now. If those are FEMA reimbursable, then we will have expended much less of the CARES Act. So without the equipment, we have a hundred and forty-three thousand left in CARES Act funding. And it should say with the equipment. So if we don't get FEMA reimbursement, we have seventy-four thousand left. Which is still a lot of money that we can use for the next year. So just some quick math for you. Six months of enhanced police coverage with FEMA reimbursement is about thirteen thousand. And six months of enhanced fire coverage under the CARES Act is about twenty-one thousand or thirty-four thousand annual or for both under six months. Annualized, it's about seventy grand or or kind of what we have left if they don't count the equipment.
All right, good question for you.
Yep.
Do you have to, how do you have to prove to them that it is enhanced?
So the requirements, and I'm very diligent with this because it it makes me nervous. So the requirement is that you wouldn't fund it normally, so it wasn't funded in the FY twenty-one budget and that it's for COVID. So the primary overtime for police right now is to help with the schools. So they are, we are doing overtime in the afternoons to facilitate the traffic in front of the schools and to make sure that that process runs well. In addition to making sure there isn't one officer on for most of our shifts so that they can properly respond to calls despite, you know, COVID concerns. So we would want to do that in a real environment. We can't because of budget constraints. So the COVID money allows us to properly staff based off of COVID and we've we've gone through three rounds of reconciliation with the state and the federal government, and we're very comfortable that they they are okay with our plan. So we have to submit a report every quarter to both and defend every dollar based off of literally this is your hourly wage, this is how much we paid in overtime and we submit that and they say yes or no.
Okay.
So it's a very strict process. In terms of fire, it's, we didn't, we don't have overnight coverage. We've been providing overnight coverage and we think it's been paying dividends. We've been able to respond to many more calls and, you know, we we would like to do overnight coverage anyways. But definitely in a COVID environment, it can be the difference. When other departments are without their services at all because of some COVID outbreak. You know, we could be the only ambulance in the region. We don't want to rely on other departments to to come and help our residents when when they can't, right, because everybody's relying on mutual aid heavily. So that's not always the case, but it is the case quite a bit in this environment. It's kind of scary, to be honest.
So Ryan, you said that, you know, worst case scenario, we can roll seventy-four thousand dollars if you can pull that spreadsheet back up. And you said there was an extension after December thirty-first for which we could continue to leverage those funds. Do you know when that extension will end?
A great question. I asked it. They said there is no end to the Federal Declaration of Emergency, so it's at least until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
And do we know if the resource will be replenished? Will there be more funding coming out or is that going to be done with?
So I've been working with our chiefs on that exact question. I think we need to act like we're not going to get more money. It's been very politically untenable. Oh, this is the nicest word I can come up with with the federal government right now on whether or not they're going to assist local municipal governments who are doing all the work with on the COVID, by the way, and the state government. I do not think, I think there's a chance after the inauguration, when the new administration is in and we see what the Senate looks like after tomorrow. I hate to bring politics in it, but it matters for things like this. The the funding picture might become more clear. But what I'm trying to show you with this spreadsheet is we can continue the main expenditure for at least six months. And in talking to the chiefs, that might get us to a point where the vaccine has been saturated enough where we might not need the additional six months. So where we really need the funding and to spend money is in the next six months, you know, responsibly spend. And I think we can cover that with the money that we have. I I know we can cover that. It's just, it's makes me uncomfortable to say I'm for sure that we can do it, but this this is showing you that we've been working through the numbers and and think that we're okay.
Yeah, well, based on, based on your numbers there, we could, we can continue for twelve months with police and fire if those numbers pan out in the worst case scenario, right?
Yeah, and the the thing that people people don't think about with the CARES Act is some of the funding we might need is if if we have an extended absence with one of our employees because of because they get COVID really bad or we have to shut down one of our departments. We still might pay our employees and then have to bring more employees in, so there's costs there. That may or may not happen, but we should reserve against that. And then we don't know what shutdowns are coming. It looks good so far. I don't think we'll need any more IT resources, but, you know. There's just some unknowns out there and you know I'm conservative by nature with money, so I want to reserve enough while not holding it back and providing a level of service that we need to do. And I'm bringing this to you so that you can see my thinking and and comment on whether or not you agree or would like to invest in in different ways.
Well, when will we know if the funds would be the best case scenario funds? You said you were trying, you were waiting to hear back from a couple of grant opportunities?
Yeah, if and FEMA should fund our fire, our ambulance equipment because it 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 fits every definition. I have no problem spending CARES Act money on it. The, it's whether or not we get FEMA reimbursed because they'll pick up seventy-five percent of the bill. It sounds stupid to everyone because it's both the federal government, but it's two different pots of money. So if FEMA covers it, then we have all the CARES Act we need to continue public safety services through the year. And would have all the reserve we need and we should know that tomorrow.
Great. Can you send us a note to let us know how that turns out?
Yeah, and I've been working, Dennis O'Donnell, who's awesome, and you guys already know that is in contact with FEMA and we've been we've been pounding on this question. We just found out that this was extended last week. He's been in contact with them every day, trying to get these answers so that we can give you the best information possible.
Great, thank you.
All right, so that's like a fun, really confusing update for you, but that's the best info we've got.
Okay.
I will continue on. And I'm sorry, just trying to gather myself. Okay, much less dramatic. We are continuing our exhaust mitigation procurement. We've received the submittals and and are ready to give the notice to proceed. Probably to be done by the spring at this point. And then we did our assessment of the Library Foundation Basement, which you also saw Basement Foundation, which you saw on the Capital Improvement Plan. And it doesn't look as bad as we feared. So it looks like we'll be able to fund the repair of our Library Foundation without significant resource requests in in the next year or two. So that's a really good piece of news and a really good job by the Library Trustees to 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 force us to look at that building to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for it and we we were able to hire an engineer to help and I'll have that report for you at your next meeting. Then lastly, the digital records project that we got the grant for. I was able to work with UMass Boston. I think it's really important that we have a project manager for this project because it would take up all of my time. And I'm sure you want me doing other things. They're going to help us with scope, transitioning the department's naming conventions so that it's all very sustainable. And helping us bring those files to to a public-facing solution, which means people will be able to access the records, which is why I think it's it's good in general, but definitely in a COVID environment. And then prepare our training so that we're really using these these systems. Good night, buddy.
Paid for by a grant.
Yes, sixty thousand dollars in grant money we got to digitize our our records and create a document management system, which is going to change the town. And I know it doesn't, doesn't feel that way to your average resident, but we'll be able to to handle your records requests faster, to engage our employees better and to get you the documents that you need, maybe twenty-four hours a day online. So it's going to be a really good project. It's going to take about a year, but it's going to be worth it. And if we ever do renovate the Slade Building, there'll be no filing cabinets or very few, so there'll be more space. It's all very COVID-friendly and just a lot of good goodness to it. It's all very COVID friendly and just a lot of good goodness to it. Alright, so lastly. Just want to recognize the, the fire department. They have, they've had a big year, six hundred and ninety-four emergency calls, seven percent higher than in two thousand nineteen. Working twenty-four hour shifts for, for a lot of this with. I don't know, the type of safety protocols that I don't think most people would be willing to do. Going to known COVID cases and then finding out later, you know, that, that they might have been exposed and then dealing with the testing and, and everything that comes from that. So I, I think we have the best fire department around, but it's nice to have facts to show what we already know, that our department's very professional and efficient. And I'm looking forward to seeing what they can do in twenty twenty-one and hopefully giving them a break because they, they've had a very difficult year.
Excellent delight fight too. They're excellent delight fight.
Yeah, plus they're joyous, so.
Okay, great. Thanks for the, thanks for the report, Brian. Alright, next. Next we've got policies to review, which we don't have in the press. And then we've got, we've got a single appointment resignation. We got Tim Newton, on-call health inspector.
I'm notifying you of the appointment of Tim Newton. There's no financial impact. To our budget on this. He is an on-call health inspector. The Board of Health has decided to bring Tim on to. I don't want to say professionalized because they've always done a good job, but he will be hired to do the most of the Board of Health inspections. He will receive his payment from fees that we collect. And the rest of the monies will go into the general fund. So Tim is. Highly regarded, has all the certs that are necessary. He's a great guy. We met him. And people will see him around town. Doing our health inspections, septic, restaurant, and all the different functions of the health department.
Okay, just regarding appointments and resignations and whatnot. So we, we, we clearly, you know, don't have Bobby here tonight. Who, who will be joining us, you know, in that capacity during our meetings?
So it will be Christina Suckler, who you know. From, from various.
I guess I meant when. I know Christine is doing it. So when, sorry.
She, she will be with us at our. Probably at our next meeting, but she'll definitely be doing the minutes and all the administrative work after the fact, so.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so you don't need any action from that, from us on that then?
I don't. It was, it was.
Yep.
Well past the notification period, but still thought you should know.
Alright, thanks. And so we don't have any wage authorizations, item nine. Item ten, we've got some minutes to approve. So these are December fourteenth minutes, which I, I think it was just me and Katie and Jeff, right?
Bottom up now. Dan, Pat, Katie. So it was Dan, Pat and Katie at this meeting.
Okay, so we can vote on these. You know. I know Katie, what do you think? You want to?
Okay. Motion. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The court force motion to accept the minutes from December fourteenth.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Alright, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes, Katie? Chris?
Epstein.
Epstein. Okay, so we have two, two yeses and two extensions. So. We can move forward with that as minutes. And the next item here would be committee updates. I don't have any town center ones or others. And Katie, I know you provided some already for some others. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, nothing at the moment.
Okay. Item twelve is matters not legally visited by the chair. I don't have any. Anyone else have anything else they want to bring up that, that they haven't yet?
Yeah, I have a question and possibly a proposal if I could just mention it. Could you hear me? Okay, guys. One of the, and it's related to COVID. One of the areas that I've been taking note of now that is only going to become even more. Of an important area. It has to do with the vaccinations, information. My understanding as, by watching it on television from a federal level down to the state. Everything is basically being passed down to the local areas, I'm assuming. The Board of Health. Now, speaking as a senior myself, not only do we have a significant senior population here. But the question is going to be coming, as I'm already thinking about it for myself. Needing the information as to what do I personally do? Where do I, who do I call? Where do I have to go? We're a small town, so I'm assuming we're not going to have our own distribution area because with the lack of, we don't have the businesses, et cetera. So it sounds that like that as it, this becomes even more and more available. For the enormous task of the vaccination, that people are going to have to. One, have an appointment to get it. They need to know where they're going to have to go, which means for us. I'm assuming it's going to be out of our town, some area. And I'm, I'm just curious if people are as. I guess curious as I am about the information as it comes down because it's certainly in my head all the time now. Do I just call my doctor's office and this? So what I'm asking is, is this, is this information, Ryan, coming down to the Board of Health? As we understand it, if it is, or even if not, I'm proposing that we direct the Board of Health to somehow keep an update. So that there is a source in this town that people, not just seniors. Young people. Asking questions for their children and so forth, as this becomes even more and more available. We can act as a distributor of most recent update information and perhaps answer these questions that I've presented. I don't know how you feel about that as a board as, as a proposal, if we don't have that, but it was something that. I'm seriously thinking about.
I'd be happy to give an update on what's going on.
Yeah, well, that too, but I just. I guess I'm looking that we can somehow. Let the town know that, okay, we have an outlet, whether it's through you, Ryan, or our Board of Health. Where are these questions? If you want, you need to get answers. On the most updated thing where we are now, like the governor was on TV today and talked about phase one and then phase two. Every day it's probably going to have a different phase as more and more people are going to be included in this. Then someone can at least know they can have a place here in this small town. We'll be able to answer them. Okay, I think I'm eligible now. But what do I do? Where do I go? How do I, you know, where do I have to make an appointment? These are things that. Strike me as what other people might in town might be confused about also.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's a good idea. We, we can't direct the Board of Health as, as a publicly. Elected body. We can, we can suggest and we can, you know, ask them to provide this sort of. An update for, you know, through the town's website or whatever other sort of mechanism we can do it. So. Ryan, you know, I, I did something. We, we can contact them and ask them to, to.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking it up here. Give an update on what's. Happening. So Jan, Wednesday at ten thirty AM. The. Board of Health has created a vaccine subcommittee. So they meet every week to discuss this and it's public. It's available on Zoom. So next, this week it's, it's on Wednesday at ten thirty. Last week or the week before it was on Tuesday and they normally meet on Tuesdays. So it's a. Subgroup, Judy O'Donnell's on it. Talking about vaccines. Mallory also keeps me pretty informed on, on what's going on. We found out about the phases with you today from the governor, which is troublesome, but. What we do know right now is we are joining with Rutland on next week. The eleventh, in order to vaccinate our first responders, which is the, the first folks that are getting the vaccines. Anyone who, who doesn't make that has a chance to hit any of the makeup clinics that are in the area and we've been distributing that information. In terms of the second and third phases, we don't have information right now, but I do attend. Several webinars a week from, from the governor's office and, and the health department. And we are tracking that we won't be a distribution center in Hubbardson, but we will. Partner regionally with others and we will definitely provide that information. When it's available and I will pass. You know, maybe the Board of Health wants to put out a weekly update. The, the problem is, is it changes so fast and, you know, sometimes there's nothing to update. But I don't think it's a bad idea to have. Maybe a vaccine update as part of the COVID nineteen update that, that we've been putting out weekly. To answer some of those questions. If you have the question, a lot of people do, so. But it is being discussed. There's no strong federal to state to local plan coordinated plan yet. But we do have, you know, the first semblance of a, of a plan for our first responders in place and we will be executing it the next week.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Ryan, and whatever else we can do to help the town on that. Thank you.
And if people want to go to those subcommittee meetings, you know, it's. They're just talking about vaccines and how to handle all the information. So definitely the public and people can.
Okay, and, and the else anyone wants to bring up before we go public and press question and answers? No? Okay. Any, any questions come to you, Ryan, before, during, or, or whatever this meeting? No? Okay. Alright, well, we're at item fourteen here, which is, which is an executive session item.
Can you, can you put on the screen what we're going to be doing and I'll be happy to make the motion? Thank you. I move that we adjourn into executive session under General Laws thirty-eight. Twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have. A detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the trias so declares. New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated, Local. Oh nine two and Town of Hubbardson Police Department, Teamsters Union, Local one seventy, Hubbardson DPW, and the Town Administrator Ryan McLean. After which we would adjourn from the executive session with no intent of resuming the public meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.